Welcome to the September ninth, two thousand and twenty five city council meeting at six P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Proton Laquiro.
Here.
Councilmember Lando.
He's excused. He is at the state of Michigan on business.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Approval of the revised agenda?
I'll move approval of the revised agenda.
Second.
Any additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, during special presentations, I will add first a, an award to be delivered to the Hazel Park Arts Council from the state of Michigan.
Well. Well, that moves us right into the special presentations with hearing no dissension to the change.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to recognize Councilmember Alyssa Sullivan. She will speak at length on this because she is more familiar with this. But also, we are joined by Tameed from State Representative Mike McFaul's office. Representative McFaul, unfortunately, was tied up in business in Lansing and was unable to make it back in time. So we have his outstanding legislative assistant here, ready to present this award to Hazel Park Arts Council Chairperson Alyssa Sullivan, as well as some of the other members of the Hazel Park Arts Council.
Specifically, Vice President Mara Magarosi-Laitner.
Okay. Very good.
Specifically.
Specifically. So. So what I would like to do then is invite Alyssa Sullivan and Mara over to the microphone, and Tameed will present the resolution on behalf of State Representative Mike McFaul. And while Alyssa Sullivan and Mara are making their way to the microphone, I will commend the Hazel Park Arts Council for the outstanding job that they did in this year's art fair. This year's art fair was a rousing success, and the Arts Council has been putting on this art fair now for a number of years. And this is only one thing that they do among many, and this recognition is actually deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just very proud to have received this award and excited because arts are important to Hazel Park, and being a part of the Art Council is just one part of being an artist here. And we're just excited that this happened and that our hard work on the art fair has been recognized.
So for the record, on behalf of State Representative Mike McFaul, I'm Tahme Choudhury. I am presenting the certificate of recognition to Hazel Park Art Council as Organization of the Month of August, two thousand and twenty five, for their outstanding work with art and culture at this great city of Hazel Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good action. Nice job there. Can I get a picture here, please?
Where are we looking?
Yeah, where are we looking?
You can't look both places at the same time. Crazy eyes.
Is anyone else wanting a picture?
I got it. That's there. It's looking.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for those folks out there, the art fair was a very big success this year. It was very nice, very walkable, a lot going on. And these folks have grown it over the years.
Great weather.
And great weather helps every art fair. And it's been an ongoing thing for Alyssa Sullivan. If you want a couple of statements, please.
Thanks. I really want to thank Mike McFaul's office and Mr. Choudhury here for bringing the award. We were also awarded this symbolically with all of our volunteers at the art fair on the twenty third. This is our fourteenth annual Hazel Park Art Fair. It's been really such a great, it's the largest free event in Hazel Park. It's such a great resource for our community, not just for people who live in our community, but also people who work in our community, people who want to visit our community. We were able to get some information from SEMCOG this year about the attendees. We had people all the way from other states. Those could be artists. They might be attendees. But we really, every year, we kind of seek to create better resources for the artists that participate and also increase the kind of excitement and different opportunities that we have at our art fair. So we have some great stuff in the works for next year. But I really want to thank all of the volunteers. I want to again thank Rep. McFaul's office and the state of Michigan for recognizing the Arts Council's hard work on this event every year. It takes us almost an entire year of planning. So please don't underestimate how difficult this is, but also it's made a lot easier by the wonderful dedication of our Arts Council members and the volunteers in our community. So thank you to everybody. And of course, our sponsors here in the city, Oakland County. We have our Oakland County Commissioner here as well. So I want to thank Oakland County Commissioners for their sponsorship every year. It's, we look forward to next year. We have some great things in the works, some new kind of attractions. And it's just, we're happy to have it in the city, and we hope it stays. So thank you.
And again, and to shout out to the Wayback Machine, Andy LaQuiro and Jeff Keaton and the original founders. And I saw Andy in the picture. He's still, you know, volunteering his time.
Favorite thing.
It's great to see that.
Favorite.
It's great to see that this organization has continued to thrive and grow and do great things. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to the next presentation, National Recovery Month. According to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, two thousand and twenty three's National Survey on Drug Use and Health, seventeen point one percent of Americans, about forty eight point five million people have had substance use disorder, yet fewer than fifteen point six percent received treatment. And whereas federal data shows overdose deaths dropped from one hundred and ten thousand in two thousand and twenty three to eighty thousand in two thousand and twenty four, in the lowest since nineteen nineteen. Whereas Michigan reported a thirty four percent reduction in overdose fatalities, approximately two point nine percent, two point, two thousand nine hundred and thirty one in two thousand and twenty three to nineteen hundred and twenty seven in two thousand and twenty four, making the third consecutive year of decline. And whereas over one point three million narcotics kits have been distributed statewide, reversing nearly three thirty four thousand overdoses. And whereas Oakland County Health Network continues to educate and raise awareness of all the risks and potential harm associated with the prescription drug misuse and substance. And whereas substance use disorder recovery in a journey of healing, transformation, enabling people to live a more, in a community of their choice, while striving to achieve their full potential. And whereas recovery benefits individuals with substance abuse disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate in the contribution to society, enriching the community, culture, and so on. And now therefore be reserved, resolved, the Oakland County Health Department Network hereby recognizes September as National Recovery Month, calls upon individuals, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of the substance use and the need for appropriate and accessible services to promote recovery. I so move the proclamation. This takes us to the next item, National Suicide Prevention.
You want me to do that one?
I'll do that one. National Suicide Prevention Month, September, two thousand and twenty five. Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention, resources available in the community. And whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September tenth. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas suicide is one of the leading causes of death in the United States. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, more than forty nine thousand people died by suicide in two thousand and twenty three. And whereas Michigan reported fifteen hundred deaths by suicide in two thousand and twenty three, with a hundred and sixty two of these individuals residing in Oakland County. And whereas organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Health, I'm sorry, on mental illness, and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, nine eight eight, work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life's struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas Oakland Community Health Network is committed to be in a zero suicide organization and cultivates a network of providers who are engaged in the zero suicide philosophy. Now therefore be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes September twenty fifth as National Suicide Prevention Month. Oakland County Health Network calls upon our individuals, government agencies, and public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist individuals in crisis.
And I make that proclamation as well. And the third one, Mr. Klobuchar.
Need to do it? I can do it.
Whoever wants to. Thank you.
City of Hazel Park proclamation naming September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Michigan's Hispanic and Latinx population has grown from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, according to the Census Bureau figures from the two thousand and twenty Census Bureau, that the five hundred sixty four, four hundred twenty two thousand, or five hundred sixty four thousand, four hundred twenty two Hispanic and Latinx residents in Michigan make up five point six percent of the state's population, up to four point four percent in two thousand and ten, up from four point four percent in two thousand and ten. And whereas between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty, Hispanic Americans contributed to over sixty six percent of the population growth in Michigan. And whereas with our sixty million Hispanic Americans residing in the United States, Hispanic Americans make up the largest minority group in the nation and have significantly contributed to our government, culture, and economy over generations. And whereas Hispanic Americans have made more, many important advances in areas of law, religion, agriculture, art, music, education, technology, architecture, cuisine, theater, and exploration. And whereas according to the U.S. Census, Hispanic males have the highest labor force participating in the state of Michigan, equal to seventy five percent. And whereas Hispanic Americans have provided Michigan and the United States with unique social and cultural influences, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our state and nation. And whereas Michigan is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents in Spanish and Latin American descent who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. And whereas during the month, Michigan's Hispanic American community will celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month through a series of special events featuring Hispanic history, food, dance, and art, celebrating the rich tradition and many contributions this community has made to the state of Michigan. And whereas we appreciate and honor the countless achievements of Hispanic Americans and continue our efforts to ensure the city of Hazel Park is a welcoming and inclusive place that provides just and equal opportunities for all. Now therefore be it known that Mayor Michael Webb proclaims September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Hazel Park.
Let's move. And we have Ann Erickson-Galt, our county commissioner, come up and give us a special presentation about the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I want to lift up first and foremost a new program called RX Kids, which launched September first. This is a program that provides cash benefits to expectant mothers and babies that are born on or after September first, provides five hundred dollars a month for the babies for six months, and fifteen hundred dollars one time lump sum payment to expectant mothers. This is an amazing program that was first created by Dr. Mona Hannah Atish. Hope I got her name right. Many of you may remember her as the person who identified the lead poisoning and Flint in the children and helped bring about a fix for that. And she's just doing some amazing things. So we'll have more information coming out. If anyone wants to learn more right now or wants to sign up, you can go to RXkids.org. And we'll be doing some sort of launch event sometime in the near future, and I'll make sure you all know when and where that's happening so that we can make sure the people of Hazel Park are aware of this. Couple of things, we have our budget that will be passing next week, contrary to rumors. We're working hard on making sure that co-responder funding is re-upped for this coming fiscal year, beginning October first. Can't promise an outcome. Let me put it this way. As I put it to Ed, this is a hill I'm going to die on. So.
They'll be needing your vote, so.
Yes, it is.
I'll be holding you to that.
I have those ten votes. So, so not sure where all my fellow commissioners stand, but I know one hundred percent where I'm standing on this. So we're going to make sure. And we'll, after we get that solidified for the two thousand and twenty six year, then we'll put our heads together and figure out two thousand and twenty seven funding well in advance. So nobody has freaking out the last minute about this.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
Mental part of this state has been declining for the last thirty years. And this is the first light of hope that we have some help for people that may need it in a desperate situation.
I.
And that we need to keep it funded.
I hundred percent agree. In fact, if it, if it were up to me, the whole county would have it available with at least partial, if not full, funding from the county. I don't have that magic wand to make that happen, but I am going to continue to promote this program. And I will be advocating for continued funding for the twenty seven budget. I just, far off, it's difficult to, to make that promise. But we'll figure out how to make
It's a great resource in a very high traffic and dense area.
Yes.
Is needed because outlying areas aren't always as, as needed there as well. But I think if we have more of a population growth, we have less areas to go to, to vent or have resources to get to.
I agree. Hundred percent. I had a discussion with Ed earlier this week about, or last week, I think, about community development block grant funding. There have been some changes in the program. I do not have an answer for you yet on how those changes will impact Hazel Park, or whether, you know, what we can do to make sure that you're not adversely impacted by those changes. But I am still looking into it. What I'd like to do is try to get maybe a meeting set up between the affected CBTs, including Hazel Park, and the HUD people at the county and try to get some answers. And last but not least, there is a program that we launched about a year ago to provide student debt relief. It's called SAVI, S A V I. That is ending September thirtieth, meaning that you haven't, anyone who wants to seek out student debt relief has until September thirtieth to apply. Once you've applied and are signed up for the program, then you get a full year of assistance from the SAVI people. And what SAVI basically does is looks for ways that you can reduce, or in some case, have your student debt completely forgiven. We've, our average savings per person is a hundred and forty dollars a month. So it's significant. And it applies for everybody who lives in Oakland County, who works for the county. If you're a parent and you have loans that you've taken out for your children or grandchildren, that applies as well. So it's, it's just a really great program, and I want to make sure everybody who could benefit from it gets in there and signs up before the end of the month. Go to oakgov.com to the community tab and scroll down to student debt relief, and then you can find information on how to sign up. With that, happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll let you get about your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I think I talked to you half a dozen times last week, and I appreciate you coming here and sharing with us your updates and your progress on all these issues. So thank you.
I'm always available. And feel free to call or text anytime.
Thank you. All right, that opens us up for civic announcements. Anyone in the public have any civic announcements? Anyone want to come up and say? Counsel, I do want one thing to be out there. Hazel Park was, earns the two thousand and twenty four's Tree City USA recognition from Harvard Day Foundation. And that's something to be notified, noticed for. We have taken a lot of trees out, but we're also replanting trees. And I want to make it aware that if you want a tree, go online, fill the application out through the, on our site, and please ask for a tree. We don't want to have everything bare, a nice little greenery here, and it would be nice. And us being a very dense city, it's nice to have the greenery. And it takes us to any other public discussion. Public discussion is open. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, or closed public discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent agenda items one through eight.
Second.
Any more dissent, dissension, discussion? Motion passes. Business license for two zero eight four eight John R. Road, Yato Plumbing.
They are not here today.
Not here. Business license for two two six zero one, John R. Road Liberty Pharmacy. They're not here today either. And that should do it. Thank you. And so clause was canceled. And administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests passing on second reading the Do Not Knox Solicitation Ordinance Amendments to clean up for some structural housekeeping.
I have a motion.
I'll move approval on second reading of the Do Not Knox Solicitation Ordinance Amendments, chapter five point five seven.
Second.
Needs more discussion, dissension? Seeing none, hearing none. Motion passes. Boards of commissions, anybody have requests?
I don't, but James Finkley and I and Linda Williams, we brainstormed today on some ideas for DEA, and we've got some folks that we're going to approach. So we've got some vacancies on that board, and we're looking for people who are business owners and fit the criteria for appointment. So hopefully we can bring you something to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Also wanted to give a little, a little advertisement. Hazel Park Arts Council is going to be starting a, an initiative to try to recruit some new members. We had some members that moved out of the city, some long-term members that resigned, a couple of members that had to step away temporarily. So we're looking to fill some spaces, and we're going to be creating kind of a, a working framework of what a great Hazel Park Arts Council volunteer member looks like. So we're going to get that out very, very soon, shortly. So keep an eye on our social medias for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, anybody?
Old business. Ed, I wanted to touch base on you with where we're at on the Taco Bell and their not, where their non, non-commitment to their site plan is headed and what we're looking at so far.
We're, we're aware of it.
Removed all the trees, and they weren't supposed to.
Again, I'll see if Building Department has any update. We are aware of that.
Okay.
We're talking about site plants and trees. And can we look at some of the other businesses that have nothing going on and maybe have them at least plant one or two trees?
It depends, like I said, it depends on where they're at. Some businesses are simply bound by concrete. They have.
Well, I'm sure that they can.
Concrete to, you know.
That sounds like a project for the Environmental Sustainability Commission.
Does sound like a.
And two of the members are here today.
Sounds like a good idea.
Put that.
It's okay. I got to talk to him anyways.
It's on the list.
You know.
Right, Tim? All right.
We're going to keep hounding you on that list, friend.
That's.
Well, we want our city to look pleasant as we walk through it, but also to go back to the, another thing, a new business, as we're headed into that. We do have a lot of shrubbery that covers the sidewalks. And I think that we, the year's almost ending for that type of atmosphere. But next year, I think we need to focus on controlling the shrubbery and things that hang over sidewalks. So we can actually have, we have people that walk up and down the sidewalks with their children and ride bikes and.
Mr. Mayor.
Makes it tough.
We, we have talked about that, and I will reiterate that in staff meeting tomorrow with code enforcement, to be on the lookout for those types of things. Because it is a problem.
I really want it to be a bigger issue for next year, not, this year's almost ended. So I think as we need to focus on some language for the code for next year.
We'll, we'll get on it.
I was gonna say, I think it's still an issue for winter because, I mean.
Yeah, it is.
It'll, it'll drop leaves, but the branches will still be overhanging.
Yeah, the branches will still be overhead and, you know, we don't want.
I guess we could.
We'll, we'll start with that. If you, and again, if you're a resident, especially if you have a corner house and, or you have foliage that's near the sidewalk, please keep that trimmed back, okay? It is a, it is a visibility hazard. It's a trip and fall hazard. It's an injury hazard. So sidewalks are supposed to be clear of all foliage. So please make sure you, you trim your shrubs, trees, and gardens accordingly. So that'd be very helpful.
I had a young man in here earlier, but he left. He asked me to pass it on. He likes the idea that we have the signs on like certain streets to tell how fast you're going. He lives at Bernard and Ford. He said they're really speeding a lot through there, like a raceway. And I've had complaints on Hughes as well. And I think maybe we should focus on trying to budget that in for next year and acquire some more of those signs to at least let people know, be aware how fast they really are going.
Look at that and budget that.
And keep people where, where they're at, in the neighborhood, not.
We do, the city.
We do.
Police Department does move those around, correct?
Yep, they do.
But I just think that we need to.
Right, but we have one on Harding. It's permanent. This isn't moving around. It's permanent. It's on a pole.
It actually can be moved. It's just been there for.
Well, I know, but it's not the trailer that gets moved around.
Oh, yeah.
It's not the trailer.
I was thinking of the ones on the poles.
No, the ones on the poles can be moved. Okay, they're not permanent.
No, but this is a nice.
Sometimes they're actually easier because you can just take them and put them on a pole someplace else. But, and it's not, it doesn't involve the big street.
I think that we need to have a few more of those around so people can be more aware that they are driving in a neighborhood, not on a main street.
We can do that. We can take a look at that in the budget.
A lot of people don't stop for the stop signs, and we're probably all guilty of it as well, not slowing down enough sometimes. And we all do. I'm not going to shock it. I mean, sometimes I don't pay attention to. We're all guilty of it. But.
We can all do better.
We all try to be aware of where we're at, what we're doing. Then takes us to, anyone with a new business from council? Communications and department heads?
Tim, do you want to come up and talk to the residents about why they may not have received a water bill and how it's not the fault of the city of Hazel Park?
Correct. That's very correct. So the water bills, the way it works is there's a three-step process. We, we send the bills out to a printer who then prints the bills, and then they take them out to the Pontiac Distribution Center for the U.S. Postal Service. And then from there, the bills are transferred then down to our local post office, who delivers the bills. So we've been getting some calls from residents not receiving their bills yet. At first, we thought it was maybe just because we came off the holiday and things were, you know, maybe people were off at the post office or whatever. The post office said they hadn't have any service issues that they're aware of. So we just wanted to wait and see what happened. But the calls kept coming in, so we realized there must be an issue. We do get a handful of bills returned every month that are undeliverable, generally a vacant building with no mailbox type of thing. So the phone calls coming in did not match any addresses of return bills. So that made me really want to look into this a little bit harder. So we went through everything that we do on our end. We contacted our printer. They presented us with the documentation saying everything was delivered and accepted out in Pontiac. And then I spoke with Denise Lee and Allison Bell of our post office here, and they're going to look into it. They were stunned by the numbers we showed them. They said they had gotten some phone calls from residents, but I said, we're getting them from every department up there. And I presented like forty so addresses, and it's citywide. So it's not like one post person just ignoring the route. So they did, they did tell me there was an issue out in Pontiac that they had a Zoom meeting about, and they're curious to know if our water bills could be stuck in that little thing going on out there. So that's all I have for today on that. So, so the residents, rest assured, we're on this. We're, we're looking to get it, get it solved. So just be patient. If you need to know what your bill is, you can look online or just give us a call, and we'll go over it with you. So we should hopefully have an answer in the next couple of days.
Residents can visit B, S, and A and look up their address to find their current water bill.
Correct.
Um, I'll talk to them.
Okay. All right. And then I got two other quick items. One, our, our drinking water state revolving fund, or the DWSRF, is officially authorized. All the Ts have been crossed, all the Is are dotted. Some short time ago, we've authorized what contractors were going to use. Now all the funding and everything now is all in place to get started. So we should probably see contractors starting to come into town, probably through the winter, just they're doing some preliminary investigative for the lead service line replacements. they're doing some preliminary investigative for the lead service line replacements. And then next year, next spring, I imagine we'll start seeing some action on water main replacements as part of this, this plan. And then the third thing I had was I just wanted to step back to the, to the art fair and I wanted to thank my DPW staff, Nolan Twyman, our foreman, John Gorney, Joe Tocash, Jeff Kisenwick, who also worked the event to make sure everything's just kept clean and assisted with moving gates and things for the vendors, Justin Jacobs, Rich Walker, Dusty Barber, our special projects coordinator, Mike Rogers and Daniel Whitten, they're the ones that got that park together and got everything painted and ready to go. So real good effort on all of them, very proud of how they handled it. We did meet weeks before to go over it and they knocked it out. They just got out there and was, I was shocked, I drove over there and thinking we were gonna still be bumbling around with something, they had like three-quarters of it done like in a half a day, so they knew what was going on and what was happening, so it was great. And then the event, of course, was a very big success too.
That setup was never a concern on our end, so we appreciate that so much, the efficiency and the effectiveness of your crew and how well they work together, just outstanding. And also, our members from the Recreation Department were there all weekend as well and really just kept it going and kept the, they run a tight ship, so.
Yep, it was very, it was very good, yeah, they did a great job. Nice thing is too, your art fair is nice and stable, it, the designs don't change much, we don't have to go through a whole lot, so we're able to really knock it out fast and deal with any issues that came up before the, before the event, so. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Any other departments?
Ms. Lacy, anything?
City Attorney is excused, City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, last week, a tragedy was inflicted upon this community by an evil coward who took the life of two of our residents, and I want to recognize the outstanding work of our Hazel Park Police Department in bringing a quick resolution to that case. They did an amazing job and hopefully justice will be served. Unfortunately, there is no way to bring back those two victims, but our hearts go out to them and again, Police Department, just amazing with how quick that they were able to solve this, so I want to thank them and recognize those men and women for the hard work that they do every day to keep us safe. And I'll also thank the Oakland County Sheriff's Department for their assistance as well as the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office and recognize our Hazel Park firefighters who had to respond to the scene as well. So again, a good job was done by everybody and I appreciate all of those efforts. I want to thank Ann Erickson-Gault for being here today. We spoke about some changes in the county community development block grant program. We are a sub-recipient, so we are not eligible to receive funds directly for CDBG, so we have to use the county as a pass-through and some of the changes that they are looking at may have an adverse effect on the city of Hazel Park, so we're continuing to monitor those things and make sure that we protect the interests of the city of Hazel Park and our ability to receive those funds and use those funds in a manner that we best see fit. Because remember, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken and we have to be, watch all of the funding sources that we have and make sure that we maintain those funding sources. Art Fair was fantastic, great job, Arts Council, and I want to, I want to thank my mayor and council for being professional and ethical and always taking the city in a positive direction, so.
We all reside in the city, actually.
You all reside in the city, unlike, you know, unlike some city councils in some other communities where they're facing criminal charges, we're really not residing in the cities. You guys all actually live here. And to, don't try to make me hire family members or anything like that, I appreciate the.
We have good nepotism.
Yeah, we do have strong nepotism rules and we adhere to those and follow them, so I thank you all and I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Councilperson Andrea Washington.
Oh, it's my first.
Happy birthday.
Hi, everyone, happy September, it's my birthday month.
Happy birthday to you.
I want to take some time to recognize a couple of things that I was able to attend last month here in Hazel Park. First, we had a couple of businesses open and I was really happy to see how many people turned out for those grand openings and exciting to see new businesses investing in our city and helping us to grow. I also wanted to recognize the library. They held an amazing event on Saturday for the kids that participated in an art project there. They were each given a canvas to paint and they held a gala, like an art gala for the kids, and it was a very nice event that they put on. There were some people that got dressed up, the librarians wore full-length gowns, it was beautiful. And each of the kids and the families that attended seemed to really enjoy themselves and I look forward to attending more in the future. And I think that's all I have for today. Publish the Equal Rights Amendment and that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilperson Alyssa Sullivan.
Thank you. I also want to echo Andrea's sentiments on the grand openings that we've attended in the last couple of weeks, including just one this past weekend, this weekend.
Friday.
Friday. It's really great to see continued development, it's really great to see our placemaking that we've dedicated so much time to in this community to really come to fruition and to see how the existing businesses benefit from new businesses and how new businesses are adapting to fill spaces that existing businesses maybe don't, and it's really great. I think it's something to really be proud of and I love how people talk about our city right now and they've been doing so for the last few years, so it's really great when I say I'm from Hazel Park, people are like, "Oh."
There's a great.
Right, I heard about this new coffee shop that opened, or I heard about this new business that opened, and I heard about this event where I attended something like Andrea and I did at the library this weekend with my kids or with my girlfriends because they have adult programs right now, but I will say that the grant, the artist gala this weekend was absolutely a blast, it was so lovely, I was really grateful for the invitation to attend and I spoke with the children's librarian there and talked about maybe having the Arts Council do some more advertising for them a little bit next year, maybe feature some of the artists and their artwork, but it was great, they all got up and spoke about their art, they told us the title and why they painted it, why they created it, it was really cute, and I think it's such a great experience too for kids to see that art can be more than just a hobby and it can be something that people celebrate, which I love as a member of the Arts Council and also as an artist myself, like I think it's really great. I also wanted to wish them happy birthdays, happy birthday to Andrea, but also happy birthday to my best friend Megan and my other best friend Ryan, they both have birthdays this month. I want to remind people that as the days get shorter, we do have new, we have a new.
Andy's birthday too.
Oh, Andy, I'm so sorry, Andy's birthday too.
21st.
Oh, and Lisa.
Lisa Mayo.
Lot of birthdays up here.
September babies, goodness. Well, happy birthday to anybody else I missed, no offense, hopefully taken. As the days get shorter, I want to remind people, we do have a Hazel Park Bike Group that rides every Wednesday, but we also have a new running and walking group and they do morning running and walking and evening running and walking, you can find them online, they have their own Facebook group, and I just want to remind people to be careful of pedestrians, pay attention to where you're driving, pay attention to the speed limits as we addressed earlier, as somebody that walks outside for a living, please pay attention to pedestrians, please pay attention to speed limits and stop signs, be careful when you're driving, don't drive distracted, reminder there is the new law, don't touch your phone when you're driving at all, put it on your hands-free, that's it. And then I wanted to echo also what Ed had said here, I wanted to thank our first responders and our PD and their work with our county-level agencies to resolve the risk to our community, and I want to send out my sincere condolences to the family, friends, and classmates of the victims of that tragedy here in Hazel Park.
Thank you. Mayor approach on Lady Glitter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations Alyssa on the award from recognition for the organization of the month, very cool. The art fair is my favorite thing to participate in every year and it just gets better and And I forgot, under announcements, we should remind everybody that Saturday, October 11th, is the Haunted Hazel Park Halloween Art Fair, same location. It's only one day right now, it's from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Not many, I don't think there's any other Halloween art fairs, there's just, there's lots of art fairs, but Slasher Dave, one of our local residents, came up with the idea and wanted to have one and it was a big success last year, I'm looking forward to it again this year.
Yeah.
Thank you too for this body passing the National Suicide Prevention Month resolution, reminding everybody that 988 is the suicide prevention crisis line, if people are in crisis, they can dial 988, it needs to become as well-known as 911. And on that note, if you love somebody, tell them, and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them, and thank you for coming out and participating in the democratic process.
Thank you. I'd like to say that Ms. Clubbs, you made a very correct comment about how cowardly the gentleman was that created a situation in our town, but that doesn't define who we are. What defines who we are as a city is how we came together for a vigil for this family and how we all come to support the tragedy, the people that were left in the tragedy that's happened, and I think it really speaks to how a character of our community is. And yes, Alyssa, we do see people on the street in other areas that first time come to Hazel Park, or they say, "I got a friend and just moved there," and how cool it is to walk up and down the streets, how nice it is to go to a coffee shop, how nice it is to go to a store or a bar to have a nice sandwich or, Shamrock's been a really good iconic place or venue here for years, they still, I still hear how many great comments they are going there, and as well as Cozy's Burger and Grill and the Boozy's New Bar and the Eastern Palace Club and any other coffee bars and coffee shops and even some of our local stores have really stepped their game up and cleaned up their act. It's nice to have the opportunity, when I first got on council and Andy and all of us, we used to struggle to maintain the status quo here and now it's nice to see how things have come around many years later and how we've promoted things, all of us, and moved things in a better direction to support our community and our residents here so they have the opportunities to have what other cities and communities have. And it's nice to see the children going down the streets with their parents, walking, going to the stores and having whatever, you know, a good time or just walking by. And people get out and just socialize and it's really nice. And again, let's go back to the Arts Council doing a really great job every year, putting out a nice show, it's gotten bigger every year and congratulations for your award. And moving on, how we as a city grow, it all determines how people of the city grow together, not us, we're just the Stewarts at the time, but the people, our community is the ones that pull our community through at the tough times. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.